Call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Ellsworth City Council. Monday, July 15th, 2019, 7:00 PM. All councilors are present. Item two, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, Rules of Order. We operate our meetings by Robert's Rules of Order and any other rules put in place at the organizational meeting last November. Also, at this time, I would ask that any of you that have any telephones, pagers, and for those of you old enough to remember the Dick Tracy wrist communicators, if you turn them all off, please. Item four, Adoption of the Minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council. June 17th, 2019, regular council meeting. With approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item five, City Manager's Report. Tonight, we're graced with the presence of Deputy City Manager Mote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to remind everybody that the Noon Time Rotary is holding its Electronic Waste Event on July 20th from 7:00 AM until noon time. This is by donations only. The event's going to be held at the Home Depot parking lot, and it's to raise money for the high school scholarship fund. I also wanted to remind everyone of their free family fun activities sponsored by the City of Ellsworth this summer. Wednesdays, they have the Ellsworth Concert Band Series that's going on at the Harbor. I believe those start at 6 o'clock.
Practice.
Seven?
Practice six.
Thursday, they have Ellsworth Under the Stars at Norton Park. That's the movie series, and those start at sundown, I believe. And this week is Spider-Man. Anyone interested in going? And then on Fridays, they have the outdoor concert series at the Harbor Park that begin at 6 o'clock. So, some fun, free, family events for the residents and the community.
Thank you very much. Item six, Committee Reports. Any members of the council that have been to any committee meetings this month that want to report on them?
Well, I had a conversation with the head of all of our transportation and everything else, Lisa, who told me that we are cautiously optimistic that we're going to have gas pumps installed this fall. So, if anybody's a boater, that's good news.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Keep my fingers crossed. We're cautiously optimistic.
Any other councilors? Seeing none, move on to item seven, Citizens' Comments. We set aside this time for anyone that would like to come to the podium and speak on any item that is not on the agenda. We'll give you the time and give you the ears. This is your opportunity. Seeing no takers. Item eight, Presentation of Awards. I'm assuming he's on his way in.
He is not here today.
Oh, he's not here? He's fooled me. All right, we'll do that at another time, then. This one was for Nate Burkett, for five years of service with the Ellsworth Technology Systems Department. God, no wonder I can't read these. Item nine, the Consent Agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine and be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence. The only item tonight is item nine, Council Order Number 071901. Request of the Recreation Commission to appoint Nicholas Saro to the Recreation Commission with a term to expire June 30th, 2021. Mr. Chairman, move for approve. Second. Motion second. All those in favor? Unanimous. New business, item 10. Public Hearing in Action on the Following Licensed Business Applications. First one on the list, Ellsworth Lodge of Elks, number 2743. I'm sorry, before I begin. Madam Clerk, are all of these licenses, we're all set on everything? Okay, thank you. Ellsworth Lodge of Elks, number 2743, 317 High Street, for renewal of a City Class B license, victueller, alcohol and amusement, and renewal of a State Club on-premise with catering, malt, spiritus, and vinus Class 1 liquor license. I'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this application, now's your time. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, with approval of the relicensing of Ellsworth Lodge of Elks, number 2743.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Second item, Fogtown Brewing Company, LLC, doing business as Fogtown Brewing Company, 25 Pine Street, for renewal of a City Class B license, victueller, alcohol and amusement, and renewal of a State Tavern Class 4 malt-only liquor license. I'll open the public hearing on this. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this application, now's your time, please. If you come to the podium, state your name.
Hi, I'm Patty Kirby, and I am an owner of the house right next to Fogtown Brewing Company. And I have concerns with parking there. They are parking right in front of the house and blocking the front entrance to the house when you come down off the steps and go out to go on the road. There's always a vehicle right there in the front. Plus, they're also parking on the lawn, and it's moved the lawn way back from the road from where it has been. It's deteriorating the lawn that is there. When you leave and enter the driveway, it's very hard. You have to go around the cars in coming out, especially if you're backing out of the driveway. It's very hard to see anything coming down the street. You're out into the street before you can actually see something because the cars are blocking that way. I'm also concerned with the Elm Street parking. I have come out of the driveway and turned up Elm Street, and there's been cars coming down, and you can't necessarily see them when you turn up. And I had nowhere to go, and a car was coming down, and he kept coming and coming and coming, but finally stopped, so I was able... I had nowhere to go. And that's concerning to me as well. I would like to know about other developments in the city, how they provide the parking for the number of people that are to go to their establishments. What is the base for the number of people with the parking that they have? Also, what is the number of people allowed? When Fogtown first came, they had the upper parking lot and the lower parking lot. And the lower parking lot is now a beer garden with picnic tables and a food truck that is there. So, they do not have a lower parking lot anymore. They have just the upper parking lot. And I'd also like to know if a porta potty is acceptable for a long-term solution for a venue such as this one that is out on the side of our property line. And I'm not against the businesses being successful. It's great that businesses are successful and that the city helps out these businesses. But it seems that the residents in the area aren't being given the same representation, especially with the parking right in front of their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Peter Leoni. I'm a neighbor. I live behind Fogtown, and I just want to say what good neighbors they are and how important Fogtown has become to the City of Ellsworth. It is... And it's very important that we encourage young entrepreneurs like these two young men who are... become very important citizens of our town and very involved in many of the events that we have in town. Whenever I mention that I live in Ellsworth, it's amazing in the last couple of years how people are very excited about Ellsworth. And one of the major contributors to that, I believe, is Fogtown. It has brought a lot of younger people here. It's a place for younger people to go. On the other hand, whenever I'm there, I'm always surprised how many people are there that are my age, and they're very welcoming to everybody. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jill Culver-Jamison, and I live immediately behind Fogtown. And I have lived there for, like, 30 years. I think it's wonderful that they're there, and it's wonderful that they're doing well. But it's literally my backyard. So, I'm more of a complainer than a helper here. The compressor or whatever they have going sits right on the property line, and it's on and off, on and off, on and off, 24/7. And that used to be, is still, my backyard. And now, we have our VDIE up, and as they extend their beer garden patio, I can hear everybody right through the trees. So, technically, they're probably fine. Reality, it's really not very nice. And I appreciate they're doing well. So, they're kind of expanding out and kind of taking over the area. But everything around it is residential, all of it. So, I guess I'm more of a complainer in that way. The business, great. Good for Ellsworth, good for everybody. But literally, it's the only commercial environment there. And so, as they spread, there's a food truck, a porta potty, benches, tables, and then, like I said, this compressor or whatever that's in my backyard all the time. So, that part I don't care for. The business end, fine. And all the noise that goes out to the other side of the street is fine by me, too. But I have also seen with the parking, because you can't get through there. And they've now put signs up. And I know they're trying to do things. But reality is residential. So, I wish that the planning would keep that in mind as they expand. Thank you.
David Nichols, representing 15 Elm Street and the property of my mother, Margie Beal Nichols, at 27 Elm Street. My issue is a complaint. Again, I'm very happy that they're doing well. I think it's fantastic. The parking has been an issue, as we have discussed here this evening. The signs putting parking on the opposite side of the road. So, before, when traffic was allowed to park on my side of the road, we have called the police many times because we simply can't get up our driveway. People park... We have two stakes at the end of our driveway. We have a very long, narrow, steep driveway. When people are parked near those two sticks on either side of my driveway, we can't turn our vehicles up. Now that those signs have... I'm very grateful to David Cole, my conversations with him in getting those signs on the other... On our side of the street, moving traffic to the park on the other side. But now, that's only shifted the problem to the other side of the street. If people park directly across from my driveway, which they have before, I can't get up my driveway. My wife can't get up my driveway. My mother couldn't get up our driveway. No one could get up our driveway. And if you feel like you could, you're more than welcome to come try it out for yourself. But it's an impossibility. Also, our street is two feet narrower by measure than Dean Street and Pine Street. Anytime any traffic is parked either side of the street, creates a very narrow, one-way street. My mother was recently in the hospital. If we had to have an ambulance take her, I don't know if people were parked on the street, if the ambulance could get by. We've been in contact with the fire department. I don't know if the fire trucks could get by, especially down at the end between Hancock Street and Elm Street. People are parking on Hancock Street. People are parking on Elm Street. People are parking Kitty Corner on both streets, I've seen, on people's lawns, et cetera. I'm a fourth generation of the Beal family to live on that street. My family's owned five properties on that street. So, our investment in that street, on that street, is great. It's a pain to the neighborhood. The noise has been out of control. I'm happy that the noise has stopped. I hope that is mandated by the city and not self-imposed by Fogtown because my concern is after their record license is renewed that that will come back on. So, I'd like to get more information on that. Elm Street's commercially zoned, I know that. But when they first went into the establishment, we were under the thought that if I'm shaking, it's because I'm nervous. So, we were under the impression that it was just going to be beer sold there. They have expanded, which is fantastic. But this is not the place to expand so greatly and so much because people can't get up and down our street. You know, people are sleeping in their cars. I don't know what city policy is about that. So, mine is threefold or twofold. We'll see how many we get to. It's parking, noise, and whatever that does to devalue our properties, which are there on Elm Street. So, those are my concerns, and I will step away now.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Reisman, and my wife and I have lived at 138 Franklin Street for the last two years. We live right behind, next to the Jamisons or next to Jill Culver. And so, we've had a great relationship with Ian and John. They've been... They've opened a great business. We're very supportive of what they're doing. We also... I'm also... We also want to be good neighbors, and we care about what our neighbors think. So, it's... I really urge everybody to try and figure out how we can come to a solution so that Fogtown can continue to do what they do and the neighbors, you know, feel more comfortable with what's going on. I think it's something that can be done, and I hope it is.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Sunshine Barrett. I live on 33 Elm Street, and I love Hancock County. I love Ellsworth, and I love my neighborhood. And I'm super excited for new businesses that thrive in Ellsworth. It makes me happy. I do have a concern with the noise level. I live at the very top of Elm Street, and when my kids are trying to go to sleep at night and the music is so loud that it makes it impossible. Or, another example was a Sunday afternoon. I was in my kitchen with the windows closed, had my own music on, and could still hear the music from Fogtown over the sound of my own music a block away. So, I'm excited for them to thrive and do well. But I, too, have the concern that after they get their liquor license, that the sound will come back on. And so, I just want to make sure that they can thrive and we can still have our sweet little neighborhood. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes.
How frequent do you have... And I'm not... Just trying to get an idea. Is the noise a continuum, or is it every now and then, or how is it?
So, on the two occasions that I'm talking about, the evening one, I didn't go down, but my husband went down, and they had the speakers inside the property but facing out so that the sound was able to travel up the road. On the Sunday afternoon, the band was outside, under a tent, with the speakers facing up the road.
So, it's...
And it was for several hours.
Yeah, that's why I'm going. But it's not... And I'm not trying to minimize your complaint, but it's not every night. It's been a couple of times?
So, since that Sunday, when a bunch of us had the concern and talked to them, they've stopped, and that is very appreciated. But we just have a concern that as soon as they get their liquor license, it'll start back up.
So, it was one particularly miserable time, but not every night. They haven't been horrible. I mean, it's been just a year or so, but that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Hi there, my name's Kristy Billings. I live at 9 Elm Street, right up the road from John and Ian at Fogtown. I was so excited to have Fogtown come, and I still am. I'm so thrilled that they're our neighbors. To me, like Peter, I think they are a huge asset to Ellsworth. As a former business owner, I am super excited at the new life that they bring to downtown. I work downtown still, and I encourage our tourists to go there. And I know that some people have had issues with parking and with noise. Parking, I live right near there. And while... Since they have had the parking signs erected, that was just, what, a week? Not even a week, a few days. I haven't seen a problem. And for noise, in the summer, everyone has their windows open, granted. And I have AC on, so I don't really hear it as much. My husband gets up really early. He's a baker. So, we often have white noise going on. Just that helps us sleep better. But I just am happy to have you guys as my neighbors. And I just want to say that as long as they're complying with city ordinance, I'm thrilled. I'm thrilled to have you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Kyle, and I'd also like to echo that sentiment. As a huge traveler, especially in the name of live music, it's exceptionally amazing to have an amazing music venue here in our town. And it just gives me even more of a reason to encourage other travelers to come to Ellsworth and stop here and not just drive through. And while I hear parking might be an issue, I also think that it's an opportunity to have people park other places and explore and get out and explore more of our downtown district. So, I just wanted to echo the sentiment that it's a great opportunity. It's a magnet that draws people to town and that I do believe there's a solution for the parking and noise.
Kyle, just a quick question, please. Do you live right there in the neighborhood?
No, but I work downtown. And actually, now that I've moved back home, Fogtown gets me out of the woods. It gets me to enjoy this awesome community here in Ellsworth.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Jan Thompson. I live at 3 Elm Street. I have a small apartment building. And I wish you every success. I think it's great, but it's just... You've overwhelmed Elm Street. Even with the new parking, I found myself... You know, the right side is now full. So, I'm traveling down to my house from the top of the hill. And here I come head-on to another car, and there's really... There's not enough... There's not three widths there. So, they waited till I turned in. But it's... You know, that's going to happen over and over. And the noise, mercy. It's just very loud. Even inside with the windows closed, it's hard to hear your own TV. Last summer, I think it stopped at 9. That was kind of nice, but that's no longer. Now, it's later. Also, I have had people sleeping in their cars. They're right in my backyard. I mean, I took the dog out early one morning, and I thought, "I don't know this truck out here." And people started moving in it, like 6 o'clock. You know, they're... I don't know. It's just... We've never had this kind of thing in the neighborhood before, people sleeping in their cars. It's just kind of creepy, really. So, it just... It's the only thing not residential right around there. I just... I miss our quiet street. That's why I bought the house there, to have some peace and quiet in Maine in the summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Samantha Nichols, also on 15 Elm Street. To kind of answer your question with the noise, it's consistent. Doesn't matter what day, as long as they're open, you have noise. My son is a very light sleeper, and he sleeps in the back of our house. So, he's not even facing the front of the street and has a sound machine and still cannot sleep because he hears the constant drumming of the bands that are playing. I like to come home and have a peaceful, quiet evening, and when they're open, that doesn't happen. You can't even watch TV. All you hear is the drums going from their bands. So, although, you know, I wished you guys the best of luck when you came. You're more of a nuisance now. Thank you.
Hello, Beth Fendell. I live at 61 Hancock Street, just five houses down from Fogtown. And I'm very happy to have Fogtown here. I'm not happy to hear that it's become difficult for a lot of my neighbors. In my home, I hear, in the summer, I hear the bands down at the Harbor Park. And I hear my neighbors on either side of me have kids in their garage bands. And I do hear Fogtown. None of that is concerning to me. It's sort of part of the neighborhood. But I do... What concerns me is that Fogtown is a great business. They bring people to town, as do many other businesses in town. And I just would love to see a way that we could all coexist and have this turn out to be something where each side of the issue is heard and can be... It can be addressed, and Fogtown can continue to thrive, and our neighbors can enjoy the quality of life that we have there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul Marcosian. I don't live close to Fogtown. I live downtown, but on the other side of Main Street. I have two businesses on Main Street. And from a perspective of a business owner, I'd like to express appreciation for what Fogtown has done to help revitalize and help grow our business community. It sounds like we're having some growing pains, however. And if you look at the issues that have been raised this evening, I think there's probably solutions to many, if not all, of these problems. And I have the utmost confidence that this community will be able to work on those solutions. With parking, it sounds like some progress has already been made, and we may need to continue with some of those efforts. But it doesn't sound like anything that I've heard tonight presents an insurmountable problem. And I'd love to see all the people who have voiced concerns tonight ultimately feel like we've worked out the problems and we've found solutions, and we've made it work. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, good evening. I'm John Stein. I live at 148 Franklin. I'm co-owner of Fogtown Brewing Company. You've probably seen me in here before as a representative of Heart of Ellsworth as a board member. For those who aren't familiar, I don't think I've seen all of you or many of you in Fogtown. We're Ellsworth's first working brewery, meaning we brew beer on premises. So, we fall under a different code and a different sort of licensure than other local businesses, restaurants, bars, anything like that. So, outwardly, it might seem like, you know, pints and good times and good vibes and all that, but it has been a really difficult, dynamic, and collaborative process with the city to get to where we are now, to especially to ensure our compliance with all city ordinances. So, we're, you know, part of a professional... So we're, you know, part of a production facility. We've got a tasting room. We act as a community center, a music venue. And, well, I know I and Ian, the co-owner, are really happy that we set this up in Ellsworth because you guys are business-friendly. So as we continue to grow and expand, it's been very helpful to maintain really close, clear communication with Dwight and Michael and Code and Fire, and some other members of the City Council and the city. We started out with just me and Ian about fifteen months ago, sixteen months ago. Now we have four full-time staff members and five or six part-time workers, depending on the week. These are almost all young people, almost, most of them either live or spend the majority of their time here in Ellsworth. But we see customers of all ages as well. So in addition to supporting our staff and the community, we also support dozens of local farmers and maltsters, growers, other small businesses whom we collaborate. We also support and work with other brewers at the state level. I was recently down in Augusta as a representative of small breweries in Maine, worked with legislators like Louis Lukini and the Maine Brewers Guild to pass some legislation to help some small businesses. So here in Ellsworth, we really appreciate the direction and the clarity given to us by city officials, as I said before, as we build our business over the last year. I hope the city also appreciates how we've worked closely and tried to follow the guidelines as best we can, responding quickly to city code ordinances and fire ordinances that come up. Yeah. I think we've been a vital part of the community, as a lot of people have said here this evening. We post a lot of community-oriented events and fundraisers, which Ian might tell you a little bit about later. We've maintained a good record with police. I think Glenn could testify to that. I don't think I've had police come to the brewery at any point. We were, for example, recently made aware of a new parking ordinance that impelled us to work with the city to seek out new parking accommodations for our customers, which we've done. I'm happy to go more specifically into that, answer any questions on that, and address any sort of misinformation or miscommunications. The city knows we don't necessarily have control over the no parking signs that go up. But since these parking issues have arisen on Elm Street, we've instructed all of our staff to not park there. We tell customers not to park there. We've made arrangements with the pastor at the church up the road and with some city municipal lots to put parking signs up in our business for people to park there instead of Elm Street. So I'm not here to fight for our license or defend it. I think we're compliant, and I think that city officers would agree that we're compliant with all city codes that are applicable to us. So I'm rather here to sort of answer any questions that you might have, and I guess to hear the concerns of our neighbors. I've reached out to a couple of them, asking to sit down so that we could talk and learn how we might be better neighbors, to hear their concerns specifically, so we might address them. Unfortunately, they wanted to address their issues here at council. I don't think you necessarily act as moderators, but I'm happy to be here to listen to their concerns so we can continue to be good neighbors to them and try to, as Paul said, figure out a way that we can all work together and continue to live and thrive and enjoy downtown Ellsworth. Thank you.
Not that quick. We volunteered. The noise on the compressor, have you done anything to try and address any of that?
I have. I first heard about the complaint of our neighbors directly behind us from Dwight Tilden in Code. Within a couple of weeks, I had built a barrier behind the compressor, insulated it with foam, and that was about a year ago. Maybe six or eight months later, I was in City Hall and heard another similar complaint from Dwight that said the noise issue hadn't fully been addressed. In the last couple of weeks, I've reinforced that structure, put some walls and a roof on it, and re-insulated, or added additional insulation to that compressor. I went to the other side of their house to listen. I could hear it, and it was not as loud as the traffic passing by on Franklin Street. I advised Dwight Tilden of my changes, sent him a picture. He recently came, this morning, came by again and said that it was still an issue, so we will continue to address it, reinforce it. We can't enclose the machine completely because it is a refrigerated compressor, but we can certainly put more walls and more roof on it, and I do hope it helps.
So you've basically built, you're building some type of a shed that you need to provide airflow. I understand that for it to work properly. And the band, the noise issue, you have bands every night frequently?
We don't. We have, I could let Ian speak a little bit more about that, but just briefly, we have bands on average once a week on the weekends. We have not stopped music since the noise complaints. Our liquor license is still up and running. We have kept the doors closed. We have faced the speakers in, per the suggestions of the neighbors. And I, it sounds like some of them have not heard it since the noise on Sunday. Sunday was an outdoor yearly Bar Harbor Pride Week finale parade that we do outside. We would love to be able to do it again next year, but we would hope to be able to come to an agreement with the neighbors before doing that.
Are there my questions? Anyone else has any further? Was Sunday's event afternoon or evening?
Do you remember time?
It started, the live music started at three PM. It was afternoon.
And it went until?
Six.
Ish?
The live band started at three and ended at six. There was music playing over the speakers outside, but I don't believe that it was excessive.
Counselor?
It sounds like, based on the parking, that you're amenable to, if you're already taking steps to, if no parking were in that area, that doesn't impact you, that you have alternatives, and you're comfortable with that if there were no parking around that?
Correct. Mr. Tilden, this morning confirmed that we have enough in our upper lot, along with the church parking lot, as two private lots that we can use for overflow, as well as city municipal, which don't necessarily count for our capacity, but we could still claim as overflow. But with those two upper lot and the church lot, we do comply with our capacity. Parking has been a bit of a roller coaster on Elm Street. For the past year, we've been asking for no parking signs ourselves because people do tend to park on either side, and it's a lot of work from the bartenders to go out and try to get people to move their cars. The police have been called by the neighbors on those cars. And sometimes there are people parked on both sides, and it's not appropriate. But it's beyond our capacity to really handle the parking on a city street. But I'm happy to answer any more questions on the Elm Street parking.
Counselor Fordio? You mentioned it. What is your capacity for?
It is forty-nine officially inside. And outside, we haven't been given a full number. We have a number of picnic tables, so it's been estimated by Code and Fire. And I'm not sure what that estimation was.
So you might have a dozen seats outside?
We have five picnic tables.
So a dozen.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I'll ask code enforcement, is that, that's under downtown C?
That's correct.
So that's a quarter of a place per seat plus one per employee? And they meet that with their two lots?
The upper parking lot is ending in, there's sixteen parking spaces there. The church, we went over and counted today, there was eighteen over there. So they meet it right there.
Okay.
But before...
Dwight?
The pony and Dwight?
For posterity.
I didn't want to be a target up here with John.
Oh, awesome.
That's my buddy. Come in here.
Glad to hear.
So this has been a project for us, in Code and Fire, because we try to maintain, in the instinct of what the codes are, and also to, you know, to help our business people and the neighbors that have concerns. And Paul Gill and his lovely wife, they've got the brunt of this because their complaint goes back, you know, as John said, over a year and a half, trying to find a way to contain this compressor and to keep it from burning up and to deaden the sound. I think now we've actually got to a point where we may be able to get to that. There was a question with the porta potty, and I brought that up this morning with John and Ian. I don't think it's in the best spot, so we're going to look at that again. There's nothing legally says they can't have it, but I am going to check with the state food inspector on the setback from the food wagon and things like that, so I have it covered. Yes?
Is there a single porta potty?
There's just one.
Maybe there should be more?
Oh, no, they have a bathroom inside. But it's just they have a line, you know. We don't want that going out to the streets, so we're going to have to do something with that. But I am encouraging, I do have another bathroom inside. They took over the other half of the basement, but they haven't really developed that yet. But I have encouraged them, that should be one of the first things they look at, is getting the other bathroom going. And we all have to realize, in the wintertime, the outside activities will be gone. There's not going to be people outside drinking and using the porta potty and things like that. And I think that their success has kind of overwhelmed all of us because it really was not what we visioned ourselves in our office. It kind of boomed in the last year. And it was to be, and it was to be what the main building was. The fire department said no more than fifty people. We've asked, and Mike can talk about that, he's asked for inspections through the fire marshal's office. I think the city is trying to do the best we can. Unfortunately, a lot of these complaints, we never got until this week and tonight. Or we would have tried to get a little more involved before that. But we have an open office. You don't have to give us a name. Just give us a call, and we'll try to check it out. And they don't run and hide when they see us coming. They're very good like that.
Counselor?
There was a question raised earlier. I wonder if you could address it about the lower parking, that initially, the lower and the upper parking lot was used in terms of to meet the ordinance, and now that lower parking lot is now being used for a different purpose, not parking? Is there, are there any issues with that? Or has that changed the ordinance in terms of lines with it?
Because they gave up the lower parking lot, they approached the church. And I talked to Pastor myself. He was in agreement that they could use their lower parking lot, which is roughly four hundred feet. And Mr. Richard Jenner and I walked it this morning. It's six hundred feet from Franklin Street parking, the lot we leased from the church. And it's four hundred feet from the Baptist church on the corner that they walk.
I'd also speak to that a lot, I'm sorry. The lower parking lot, we had maybe three spaces out directly in front of the building, but the beer garden space, which some people were talking about earlier, was never our parking lot. It was rented to Health Equity Alliance until they left and we took over the space. So we never had parking spaces down there in that beer garden.
Which church? Have the parking arrangement with the Methodist church or the Baptist church?
The Baptist church.
Thank you.
Pastor Connor, I believe.
Counselor Moore?
It sounds as though this business is really a successful business and one that, the type of business that Ellsworth has been looking for. But I hear what people are all saying about being indisposed by it. And I would have trouble supporting a vote in favor of it unless you gave your word that you would continue to work with the city to find a way to alleviate as much as possible, which would make it incumbent also on us to do our part, like maybe putting no parking signs up on Hancock Street and... Is that Hancock Street? Hancock Street and Elm Street, forcing people to park maybe at the Methodist church parking lot and the other place. I like the fact that it's a great business, but you have to take into account how it impacts the people who live there. I didn't realize that Elm Street was two feet narrower than other streets.
We didn't either, until about a week ago. I hope that Dwight and Michael will be able to agree that we address problems that come up in city code and things when they come up. We address them quickly and as best as we can. We've only heard these neighbors' complaints as of two weeks ago, and since then, we've made steps to try to mitigate the problems. So I only hope that the record shows that we will continue to work with the city, and we want to start to work with the neighbors. And I do want to apologize to all of them for the noise, for the parking issues, and I hope that we can figure things out. Because you guys were here first, and you're not going anywhere, and we want all to be able to exist together.
Mr. Chan?
Yes.
Have any of the folks that came up to express their concerns and complaints, have any of you spoken with Fogtown?
I have been in email contact with them. And I, I mean, I'm happy with the parking changes. I'm happy, I will sit down with him. I mean, I'm here speaking tonight because of my family's interest in Elm Street and issues that are apparent on Elm Street. But every, all my complaints voiced to the city, all my complaints voiced to the owners have so far been addressed. But there are issues above that. I mean, we may get to, when Officer Mo came to the house, he said we should have no parking on either side of the street. I would be happy with that. Sometimes we personally park on the side of the street, so that would be, that would be impacting us. But it is a narrower street. And, I'm about to answer your question, I'm sorry. Yes, I have been in email contact with the owners and have been... I've been there once. I went there with a buddy, and I really enjoyed it. I think it's a great, you know, this is a dichotomy because I think it is a great addition to Ellsworth, but there's growing pains with the neighbors. And, I mean, I'm the fourth generation of my family that live along that street. I'm not going anywhere. We have three acres of land there. We pay huge taxes. You know, we're not going anywhere. I'd be very happy if my son took over our properties on Elm Street.
So when did you send the email?
Probably a year ago, my concerns started.
You sent them an email a year ago?
Probably.
Yeah?
And then most recently, just about their, just a short email last week about their vans turning around in my driveway. Every time people turn around in my driveway, they knock over my stakes on either side and bend them, and I have to go out and buy new ones. And it's just a pain. My driveway is really narrow and really...
We understand, and you've made that very, very clear. And I think we've taken some steps to address your concerns with parking with the no parking signs. I think there are more conversations to have about that. I was just curious about the communication that you've had with Fogtown prior to this meeting.
And we have called them in the past to block the noise. And we were like, oh, yeah, we'll close our doors. And you did not do that when you submitted the request that we called you. So don't say you didn't care about the neighbors.
So that was, my question was just whether or not you've had communication prior to this meeting with Fogtown? Twice, you said?
We've called twice them directly about the noise.
I just wanted to introduce myself formally. My name is Ian Heisey, and I'm the other owner of Fogtown. And I'm happy to answer any questions directly related to music and noise. We, and I would just like to state that we do have live music, and we have a door that is open. Sometimes it is loud. We hear your concerns. It is really important to us, for sure. And the city code states that there's no noise ordinance before ten PM. And we have done our best to be compliant with that time, especially since receiving complaints.
So the city noise ordinance actually says, there's one, two, three, four, five, that describes what the news, the noise shall include. And on number one, it says, "Sound created by radios or other electronic or mechanical devices..." created by radios or other electronic or mechanical devices capable of amplifying or projecting ambient noise, including such devices operated within motor vehicles," and there are no hours stated there. It goes on for other examples to state hours, but for that one, it just says that that won't happen. So, that's what the noise ordinance says.
I have a question.
Hi, I'm Tom Kirby, and my wife Patty had spoken earlier. My only real concern is the house hasn't been really lived in for the last couple of years. Her mother and stepfather lived there and passed away, and her brother stayed there a little while while he was building his house. So the house right next to that has pretty much been empty, so there's not much to complain about because nobody's living there. But it has recently been put up for sale, and the three people that have looked at it, all were concerned, was there was some concerns with the house, but mostly it was next door, it wasn't a real selling point, so I think it's lowered the property value of that. And that's only my concern, I just have to outlive the three of them, and then it becomes mine.
You gotta tell me the right story.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby, that's a different outlook.
And it isn't out of public record now.
Conspiracy.
Dwight, I have a question, if you could go up to the podium, please. It was stated early on in all of this, that Fogtown falls into a different category than, I'll say, restaurants, bars, so on and so forth. What category, what makes them different?
He was talking regarding his state license. He goes through a different licensing process because they manufacture the beer there. He still goes under the same review through our office and fire as any other restaurant or buyer in Ellsworth.
Okay, so it's all a level playing field?
Right, right.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Counselor.
Chief Bozier. You can't get away. So the complaints about Elm Street, and I know you put some signs out relatively recently, would it be prudent, in your opinion perhaps, to ban parking on Elm Street with the narrowness of it?
That's the wish of the council, I have no issue with it, but I can assure you that the residents, many of the residents in this room, park on that street. And I came through just the other morning at 7:30 in the morning, and they were not Fogtown customers, and there were four cars parked on Elm Street. So I think it's utilized by the residents as much as it is the customers of Fogtown, and the reasons that we chose to put the no parking on the sides of the street that we did are to, for ease of access in and out of Elm Street, and because of the sidewalk on Elm Street preventing vehicles from getting off of the roadway at all. And so to allow for more space in the travel lane to go up and down Elm Street. With one vehicle parked on the side of Elm Street, on the side that we've left open for parking, it's completely accessible for any emergency vehicle. The 20 feet setback from the corners allows for the fire truck to make that swing off of what's now Hancock Street onto Elm Street and proceed up Elm Street. There are many, many roads throughout communities all over the area where if you meet another vehicle on the road, you might have to, you know, pause and let a vehicle pass by a vehicle that's, you know, parked on the side of the road and allow for two-way, two-lane traffic. I mean, that's not uncommon throughout the entire state of Maine, I think we've all seen that before. As far as the complaints go, we have very few complaints that have come into the police department. I can tell you that of all the liquor-serving establishments throughout the entire town, in my 16 years of experience here, we have never want, not one time been to Fogtown for any sort of illegal activity, any sort of fights, any sort of disorderly conduct, anything like that. So to say that about an establishment that's serving alcohol and very little food, I think that, you know, speaks to the type of clientele that they attract to our community and the type of people that are there at their business. The noise for music, as a general standard, when we enforce the noise ordinance throughout the city, and this is, when we've, you know, we've had many issues over the years with noise ordinances, violations, people interpret that ordinance differently, but we have strictly adhered to the 10:00 P.M. limit for noise, for excessive noise, to include bands or any type of music that's been playing. We go to apartment buildings, for example, where somebody might have their TV excessively loud, or perhaps they have their radio stereo turned up, and we will ask those individuals to turn it down if the officer who responds agrees that the noise is excessive. In a situation like a band playing in a restaurant, we would go to the area and we would observe, and from a distance, and if the officer on scene agreed that it was excessively noisy, then the officer would make contact with the owners and ask them to turn the volume down. We've done it at other establishments, we've done it several times over the years at Chummy's. Bands are generally receptive, they will and have the capacity and the ability to turn their music down, and I'm 100% confident that had we had complaints and responded to Fogtown and spoke to the owners, that they would be responsive, because they've been responsive every other time that we've had to respond for parking issues. They've gone the extra mile to try to identify their patrons and get them to go out and move vehicles when we've asked them to move vehicles in the past. So I'm completely confident that they will continue to work with, within the parameters of the ordinances, to, you know, provide whatever changes and adaptations they need to make in order to be able to abide by the ordinances, but the noise ordinance is just something that we've never enforced, we've never enforced it beyond that 10:00 P.M., strictly adhered to it, we've always followed that as a guide.
Thank you, Chief.
I don't, I don't want to take much more time to beat on an expired horse, but I do think there are things that can be explored, and I think Chief Mordred just mentioned that perhaps one of them might just simply be asking the music volume to be turned down a little bit, but perhaps there are also some kind of, like, sound deterring mats or something like we used at the basketball courts to try to keep some of the noise contained in a given area. I'd like to think that at least some of those opportunities would be explored.
Thank you. Counselor Fordia.
Having said that, and I don't offer anything other than the knowledge that we have a whole basketball court full of sound curtains, if someone wanted to try them to see if it helped around a compressor, they might be able to borrow a couple to see before they purchase. Just, I'm saying, we only sound curtain one basketball court now, so they're all sitting in the trailer at the highway guard. So I'm just, you brought it up, so I'll add that on top of it.
Thank you.
I just want to say one more thing, I had a thought regarding the, just something to think about with no parking signs, living in that neighborhood for 28 years as I have, I don't have small children anymore, but when I did, then and today, it's still frightening when, like, before Fogtown came and no cars were parked on the, you know, very few were parked on the street. People use the High Street to Main Street, cut through and blast through there, and if we end up with no parking on Elm, and there are a lot of small children on Elm Street, there's not many at all on Hancock, but anymore, but if those become no parking streets, they become wide open for people to blast through that shortcut. They're still coming through, they're just a lot slower than they used to be, due to cars being parked on the street, just a word of caution.
Thank you.
It's becoming complexer and complexer.
To add something more complex, or maybe just another idea, I just visited Belfast last week to deliver some beer, and many of their streets are one-way. I'm not a proponent of it, but we just added another idea to the mix.
Seeing no other takers, the closing of the public hearing? Counselors.
Mr. Chairman, having listened to all this, I understand that it's still a work in progress. I'd offer a motion to approve with the understanding that the applicant and our staff is going to continue to work on this issue to come to a fruition, that would be my motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd like a report back in six months.
I imagine you would.
Six months.
No.
You'll be on our mailing list.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
A serious, so thank you for the public input, that is eye-opening to me, it's what it's for.
Yep, absolutely.
And one other note on my part, yes, it was a unanimous vote, that does not mean that we didn't listen. Personally, I grew up in the neighborhood, I'm very, very familiar with it, I grew up at the corner of Hancock and Dean. This was a tough decision for me, I could've really gone either way. What put me, what made it unanimous, the way the chief spoke, before that, I was going the other way. But I, because I grew up there, it was very tough. You guys deserve a quiet neighborhood to live in and to enjoy. The business, I think, in my opinion, it probably got more successful than what they imagined. I would encourage them to go knocking on doors on Hancock Street and on Elm Street, on everyone's door, introducing yourself to them, seeing what you guys can do with your neighbors. I said my piece.
Next up, Jennifer Wing, doing business as Pepper's Pub, 20 Water Street, for renewal of a city Class B license Victular alcohol and amusement, and renewal of a state restaurant, lounge, mall, Spiritus and Vinus Class 11 liquor license. Open the public hearing on this application? Seeing no takers? Public hearing is closed. Counselors?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous?
Yep.
Why do I take these off? Next, Melanie Ammler Fox, doing business as Helen's Restaurant in Ellsworth, 55 Downey's Highway, for renewal of a city Class C license Victular alcohol, and renewal of a state restaurant mall, Spiritus and Vinus Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 liquor license. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed. Counselors?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of Helen's Restaurants, request for renewal.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous? And lastly, Little Max LLC, doing business as Hidden Vibes Tap Room, 59 Franklin Street, Suite 2B, for a new city Class B license Victular alcohol and amusement, and a new state Class A lounge, mall, Spiritus and Vinus Class 10 liquor license. Is the applicant present tonight?
I am.
And would you state your name, please?
Corey Dard.
I'm sorry?
Corey Dard.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing is open on this application. Public hearing is closed. Counselors?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the application as presented.
Second.
And would suggest they take note of the neighborhood issues they've witnessed and not be back here next year with that?
All those in favor? Item 11, council order number 071902, request of the deputy treasurer, tax collector, to offer for sale by sealed bid various properties that have been acquired for non-payment of real estate taxes.
Good evening, council, Kelly here, tax collector. The city currently has eight properties, seven of which foreclosed due to non-payment of real estate taxes and one due to non-payment of sewer charges. All parcels were mailed warning notices of foreclosure and a 30-day redemption letter after the parcel foreclosed explaining they could pay off all past due bills and interest to redeem their property. The redemption letter also explained the parcels that are utilized as a permanent year-round residence. If taxes were unable to be paid in full, city council would consider granting a payment plan. None of the previous owners responded. In accordance with Chapter 10, Ordinance for the Disposition of Tax-Aquired Property, I am requesting permission to offer these parcels for sale by sealed bid.
Counselor Phillips.
Yeah, first question, the Maria de P property, why is that there, I thought that was being saved for possible future use by the city? The Bangor Road, 1399.
That was before my time and it foreclosed, I wasn't aware that it was being held anymore.
Yes.
It was my understanding, based on a finance committee meeting, that we decided that we weren't going to use it and put it up to bid. We can certainly take it off there, though.
I think it should be, because there were some other discussions about possible use by the fire department or future time for a disposition, and it's a nice piece of land right at the crest of the hill, and may be of value. The value to the city, I think, is more to retain it, and the value of it for resale if we decide to get rid of it, it's not going to draw.
Okay.
So I would suggest that, at least that one should come off. My other question is, why is there not a minimum bid on these properties?
There is, there's the account balance that shows the minimum, that is the 2020 taxes and estimate, all past due taxes, plus 10% of the assessed value. And that's listed as account balance, and that would be the minimum they could bid.
I read through it and I didn't see where that was considered the minimum bid in the specs or listed as, that's why I didn't understand it.
Oh, okay.
The way it is. So is the fact that that is the minimum bid listed?
The account balance is the minimum bid that someone can bid.
And we'll go ahead and change that when we do, when we put out the packets.
Yeah, I'd say it would be best if it said just a strictly minimum bid, if you do understand.
Counselor Fordia.
And I believe our attorney said that in the bid package, we can put the earnest money is non-refundable?
Correct.
That was gonna be my next question, too.
Yes.
And how much is the earnest money?
10%.
10%.
10%?
The earnest money.
Of the high bidder?
Yes, if they pull out.
Just one, if we are indeed, at Mr. Phillips's request, gonna pull that property on the Bangor Road, then we probably ought to have staff, eventually, not in this motion, but stat clearing the title. If we're gonna keep it, we ought to clear the title. Because right now, all we can give is a municipal quit claim. If we're gonna use it for a facility or a structure, we probably ought to stat down the road and clearing the title, because it's gonna take some time.
That piece of property, I think, has been foreclosed upon for quite some time, it's not something recent.
Yep, I agree. Yep, I agree. It'd be good to have that cleared title if we went for federal funds.
Another issue, yes, it is.
Any other comments? I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for proof, Council Order 071902, request of the Deputy Treasurer-Tax Collector to offer for sale by sealed bid seven properties located in Ellsworth required for non-payment of real estate taxes and non-payment of sewer charges, and with the removal of the Bangor Road property from her list coming, making total seven.
Motion and a second. If there's no further comment, all those in favor? Unanimous. Item 12, Council Order Number 071903, request to approve a temporary extension to the existing agreement between the City of Ellsworth and Northern Light Medical Transport that provides short-term quarters at the Ellsworth Fire Department.
Mr. Tapper Fire Chief. So this request, we did have a meeting. The EMS committee, made up of counselors and staff, met with Northern Light Medical Transport and came up with a few items that we felt needed to be added to the agreement if you choose to continue with that agreement. Most of those you had in your packet dealt with financial obligations on their part. To be able to get that language into the contract in time, to get their attorneys to vet it, our attorneys to vet that contract, we just didn't quite have enough time to get that done to bring it to this meeting. So we're asking for a 60-day extension so that we can have that time to get that in there. It may not take that entire timeframe, but that's all that I'm up to.
Counselors, any question?
I have one. I know the answer to it, but I think it's important. The partnership is still working. It's still a positive for the taxpayer of Ellsworth.
It absolutely is. Obviously, we only found these few minor things to discuss and bring into the equation. Everything else, we've only had a few minor things that have been held at the management level between Northern Light and the Fire Department, and it seems to be working pretty decently.
Thank you.
So if we add item 2 on here for changes, it should say if there are no issues, not if there is no issues.
Okay.
Good courage. My error.
Yeah. You move? Say a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve a 60-day temporary extension to the existing agreement between the City of Ellsworth and Northern Light Medical Transport that provides short-term quarters at the Ellsworth Fire Station.
Hearing no further discussion or questions, all those in favor? Item 13, Council Order Number 071904, request of the Deputy City Manager to accept a revised agreement with the County of Hancock for providing Fletcher's Landing Township Fire Protection and Emergency Services.
Do you want me to speak for that? So we were approached as the, we currently had had an agreement to provide structure fire protection only to Fletcher's Landing Township. We were approached by Millard Billings, who is the UT Coordinator for the County of Hancock, a short while ago, to update this existing plan and was requested to add a few additional services to the plan, which was listed in your information, but in summary, it includes vehicle accidents, hazards in the roadway that may create an emergency situation, entrapment both in vehicles or in machinery, fire machinery, or anything of that nature, leaking fuels or fluids, ice and water rescue, and confined space rescue. And in all disclosure, we have actually done some of those items on that list, simply because we're not going to leave people hanging. So between the discussion between Mr. Billings and myself and the city, we wanted to get that language in there to cover that. Additionally, to that increase of service was an increase in the stipend that the city would charge for that service as well. Formerly, it was $8,500 annually and we're recommending $15,000. That, I'd be to provide you a spreadsheet that showed the formula of how that number was devised from many years ago to the way, the same way it would be done today. And I did also include in my information to you, from 2012 to present, the Fire Department, according to my records, has responded to Fletcher's Landing Township 17 times. So we're not talking a huge number of responses to that area.
So you're comfortable with the language and you're comfortable with the amount of money will cover your expenses?
I am, I am. The other point of interest that they did also want us to do first respond to EMS, and we are obviously not at that level from the Fire Department. This agreement is a one-year agreement with the ability to discuss that in the future if you so choose to want us to be able to do that as well. So we will revisit this in one year's time.
Counselor?
So I just want to, I agree with this. I think this, obviously, there's a difference between mutual aid and working in partnership and collaboration with surrounding communities. However, when it goes beyond that and surrounding communities are interested in having the resources that the taxpayers of Ellsworth are paying for to have, in this case, the county or surrounding communities pay for that, I think that's appropriate and that we need to make sure that that's the case going forward in these situations. So I think that's, this proposal makes sense and is equitable in terms of what we're responding to.
Correct. And I think the other advantage of this only being a one-year, where we are making a significant change in the language, if we find that that is not adequate, we can adjust that number at a one-year timeframe as well. That makes sense.
Say a motion? Counselor?
Move to approve requests of the Deputy City Manager to accept a revised agreement with the City of Ellsworth and the County of Hancock for providing Fletcher's Landing Township Fire Protection and Emergency Services.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Item 14, Council Order Number 071905, request of the Development Services Director to approve a business and residence contract for services at the Union River Center for Innovation.
Good evening. As most of you recall, during last month's meeting, the Council accepted a grant award from the Maine Technology Institute to help fund ongoing programming at the Union River Center for Innovation, or IRKI. The grant helps to fund ongoing programming at IRKI, and one of these programs is our ability to provide a business and residence or entrepreneur-on-site position. This position helps to mentor those startups that are enrolled in the incubator programming. Over the past three years, the entrepreneur-on-site position has been helped by Ms. Kathy Taylor, or Kat Taylor. She not only helps mentor businesses, but she also assists in administrative and financial oversight of the center. She provides key stakeholders contacts for entrepreneurs to network with within the state and within the region and even nationally. And she's helped the entrepreneurs apply for and receive grant funding, again, from state and federal grant resources. So now that we've received and accepted the 2019 MTI Grant Award, I'm asking that the Council please consider approving a renewed contract, which will be funded from the MTI Grant with Kat Taylor to be the business and residence at IRKI.
Counselors, questions?
How about a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll explain later. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Move to authorize the City Manager to approve a, what? To approve a business and residence contract for the services at the Union River Center for Innovation. This contract will be funded from the Maine Technology Institute Grant approved by Council on June 17, 2019.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
I have another motion. All right, both of them?
Uh, next one's a different agenda, right?
All right.
Stay right there, you did that so well.
I'm ready, I'm ready.
Stand by. Item 15, Council Order Number 071906, request of the Development Services Director to approve a services agreement with Pulse Marketing at the Union River Center for Innovation.
I can give a brief explanation on that one. So in addition to the business and residence position, another program area that the MTI Grant helps to fund is marketing and business coaching at the Union River Center for Innovation. Over the past three years, marketing was conducted primarily by my predecessor, the previous Economic Development Director, in conjunction with the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation. That marketing focused on filling the incubator. Now that the incubator has been filled at 80%-ish capacity, we're looking at a more individualized marketing plan to be able to help those businesses that are there grow and graduate. The idea is that simultaneously, we would also better market the Union River Center for Innovation to be able to get new businesses to come in to take the place of those that graduate. The business coaching that has taken place previously over the past three years has been on big issues, helping the businesses get over big issues that they're accomplishing or to get them to accomplish and move on, and again, graduate. But what's missing is providing those tenants with the tools that they need to basically run their business on an everyday basis and to be able to, again, get out of the incubator and graduate and locate in Ellsworth. So Pulse Marketing has an established relationship with IRKI and the businesses within the center, and they've offered to continue marketing and business coaching at IRKI. Again, now that we've received the MTI Award, I'm asking that we can consider approving a services agreement, which will be funded by the MTI Grant with Pulse Marketing at IRKI.
Are you ready for me now?
Counselors, any questions? Now I'm ready.
All right. Move to authorize the City Manager to approve a services agreement with Pulse Marketing at the Union River Center for Innovation. This agreement will be funded from the Maine Technology Institute Grant approved by Council on June 17, 2019.
You do that so well.
Thank you. He does that well, too.
Motion and a second. Further questions? Counselor?
Just a comment. I just wanted to say that I think this is a good example of public resources, looking, finding grants, but working in partnership with businesses. That's what the public does. That's what the city should be doing in terms of helping businesses to grow and thrive, which is a benefit to the city in many, many ways, and there's always that balance. This center, it's remarkable in terms of getting to know some of the businesses that are operating there now and the innovation that's happening. It's a great opportunity for the city in terms of, as those businesses graduate, certainly hope that those businesses will stay in Ellsworth and continue to operate. We bring new businesses in, but the attraction of the different kinds of businesses, I think, would be very interesting for a presentation at some point for the larger community to really see and hear what's happening down there, because it is remarkable and very beneficial, I think, to the city.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 17, Council Order Number 071908, request of the Public Works Director to purchase a bulk quantity of road culvert. Oops. Item 16, I'm sorry.
You skipped a sweeper.
I, and I don't want to skip the sweeper. Council Order Number 071907, request of the Public Works Director to approve the purchase option on the existing sweeper agreement.
Good evening, Counselors. Lisa Cyclich, Public Works Director. As you may recall, approximately three months ago, I was up here asking to rent to possibly purchase a RAVO I-5 sweeper. We have since then rented for the last three months the sweeper, which has gone very well. Now I'm to the point where I'm asking to purchase the sweeper. As we discussed previously, approximately 70% of the rental fee that we have paid the last three months would go towards the purchase price. And I guess I'm open for questions at that point?
Counselor?
So I'd just like to remind everybody that this was an item that was part of the capital plan, and it was put in there and in the budget. So it's an item that's budgeted, it's an item that was identified as a need and approved in that process.
It, it wasn't budgeted.
It's outside of the budget.
This is one of the ones that we pulled out for outside of the budget for future financing.
Oh, so it came, it was in the capital plan, just not in the budget.
We thought it was a great idea, though.
Yes, that's it.
Just a couple comments I just wanted to, I guess, bring up, because I feel like the questions may come up. So we looked into how many hours we would potentially have swept in the past versus how many hours we are sweeping this year. So I had Dustin put together, we estimated in the previous years using our old sweeper, we were looking at somewhere in the 2,000-hour type range for sweeping. We are, with this new sweeper, it's better, it's quicker, it's nicer. I think we're going to end up being in the 500 to 1,000, we're not really sure at this point, hour range. So we're almost cutting the amount of time in half, I believe, for sweeping.
And where in there?
Hmm?
And where in there?
And where the gutter brooms and the third brooms are cheaper, there's no main broom to replace, so the brooms themselves, I'd replace probably, I'd say probably eight times or so in the past. So far, we're on our second or third set, correct?
Third set.
Third set. There's no sprockets, belts, there's less pieces to have to replace and keep track of. It has the option to clean out our catch basins. Once we're done sweeping, we're going to test out the ability to do catch basins. It picked up leaves, and we will look at that option in the fall, if possible, to pick up leaves. We have used it on numerous occasions, I would say probably six or seven at this point, cleaning up spilled rocks, spilled concrete, cement dust, millings. We've, you know, we've had the discussion about do we really need to own a sweeper all the time? These are items that if we did not own our own sweeper, we wouldn't have the ability to react fast enough before the concrete set up on the pavement and get it cleaned up. I truly do feel that this is something that we need to look at and will be a benefit for our community.
I think, I think overall, if the thing works, seems to work well and the crew is happy with it, I think your 2,000 hours is a bit optimistic. That would be 50 hours, 50.
Yeah, he's got 25.
Fifty weeks of sweeping.
So he, this was in the old sweeper. They used to run night and day shifts for basically April, May, and June.
25 weeks a year?
What's that?
25 weeks a year? It's a bit high. It doesn't, it matters not. I think the new sweeper's probably the better way to go, and I think it's probably a good choice. Seems to work well, and everyone seems to be happy with it. What's the status with the old sweeper? Do we still have it?
Apparently it is part, yes, we still own it, but if this is approved, we would sell it.
Yeah.
Hoping to get 10-ish for it.
You're going to attempt to use the auction site you used prior to, which seemed to work well that time?
It will have a minimum bid like we had in the past.
Okay.
Yep, which I'm not going to say just for bid. But that's what I'm hoping to get, somewhere in that range.
Before we sell it, Counselor Hamilton would like to drive it.
He wants to drive the new one.
No, let him have the new one.
If he breaks it, my road.
Have we looked into an extended warranty? Is one of the... Is one available?
Yes, so that was part of our hours calculation, is the extended warranty, so it comes with two years, 1,000 hours, I mean, two years, 2,000 hour warranty. Like I said, we estimate somewhere around a thousand-ish that we're gonna use a year. So basically, the two years and 2,000 is gonna be two years of warranty. We can buy additional one-year, 1,000 engine hours for 6,500, or two-year, additional two years, additional 2,000 engine hours for 13,834. So those, the extended warranties are available, the question is, and it's gonna turn out to be how many years do you want the extended warranty? Because I believe, like I said, we'll be right in that 1,000 hours a year mark, so it'll line up, kind of.
And what did you say the present warranty is on?
It comes with two years, 2,000 hours.
Yeah, two years, 2,000 engine hours, whichever comes first, and five years on the chassis.
And if we did get an extended warranty, that would be added on at the end of the two-year period.
Correct. So I did the math, and if, so right now, with the purchase price, and you deduct the three months, or 70% of three months payment that we have, to finish purchasing it, it would be $215,796. If we wanted to go with the additional one-year warranty, it'd be $222,296, or the additional two, so a total of four years, would be $229,630.
So on another thought process, I know you told me, I think Brewer had one of these, and some of the other towns around have had these.
Correct.
Any communications with them about issues they've had over a period of time?
Brewer got one only a few months before us, so I haven't, I haven't heard anything, but I did not reach out to them.
That would be in my only thought process on gauging the validity of spending that much money in extended warranty. And the other thing, too, is I think we can probably add an extended warranty, probably within the first six months to a year of purchase.
I don't know that for sure, but generally, I think, yes, we don't.
So I would think with better information, if they've been problematic, maybe we shouldn't even be buying it, but if they haven't been, probably gauge it from some of the other communities using them before we spend that money. Just use some history.
I kind of agree. I would think that they've been problematic for other communities that we shouldn't be buying.
That's right.
And secondly, brand-new equipment rarely fails in the first three or four years, and if it gets good money out the doors, it's after that that you're gonna need to focus on repairs. We've already spent this money on warranties that we are never gonna use.
Unless it has.
Personally, as me personally, if it's my checkbook, I don't buy those warranties on brand-new equipment.
If it has Volvo written on the side in big letters.
That was one instance that we utilized extended warranty time and time again, that one piece of equipment was.
Yeah, that paid off.
Has not been. But otherwise than that, I think overall, we've been pretty good with their equipment.
Well, kind of. The man said Volvo, well, now it's international on the side. We got about three years' old already down, went down for two months.
Okay.
E.J. Cooper valve, typical.
So...
Brand-new truck almost.
I don't know, if we buy the one or two-year or three-year warranty, it's not gonna fix that problem, because that's a four-year mark, and so how much is it gonna cost us to get a four- or five-year warranty, and how much is that gonna offset from what we had to pay for repairs if we didn't have that warranty?
Right, for, I mean, for the additional, you're paying $13,000, almost 14, to get an additional two years.
Yeah.
The likelihood that we're gonna have a $14,000 expense, $14,000 expense in the first four years, questionable. And like I said, the people I know of that have bought them, I think, maybe Dustin knows more than I do, and we can, if he does, he can come up here, but as far as I know, these are newer, and I don't know anybody that's had one an extended amount of time that I could reach out to. Like I said, Brewer only got there a short time before we got ours.
I want to hear Dustin answer the question. Do you know, do you know more than Lisa does?
No. I talked to the mechanic, and he said they hadn't been many issues for her.
That's a good answer.
And extended warranties are profit centers for the businesses.
They are, they are.
Kara.
Good evening. My name is Kara Armono. I'm the Executive Director of Heart of Ellsworth. I just have a couple of questions concerning street sweeping and the abilities of this piece of equipment, considering the fact that it's an over $200,000 purchase. I'm hoping that this new piece of equipment is going to have some plugins and attachments and things that can help us with all of the trash that is left after and before, different things that happen in the downtown, whether it be a parade, Taste of Ellsworth. And I'm really hoping that we're gonna be able to establish, now that we have this nice new piece of equipment that might be coming our way, establish some sort of street sweeping schedule that will coincide with parades, Taste of Ellsworth, and any other events that are happening in the downtown. So I'd love to hear about how this piece of equipment is gonna interface with our current issues that are also issues with the green plan that have come up in those meetings that I have attended in the past. So I'll leave it. Thank you.
Kara, that would be city council, not town council.
Oh, excuse me, I'm so sorry. I apologize. I apologize.
No, sorry.
So speaking to the capabilities of this machine, I do recall when Dustin was trying this thing out, that he sucked up an Amazon box off of Store Street. So I'm not too worried about water bottles and styrofoam cups and lollipop.
And you're worried about me driving it?
It just wasn't mentioned in the loan laundry list of equipment or supplies that are used to do different repairs and different things. It wasn't listed in that list that you...
Yeah, it's, I have no concern about its ability to...
Fix it again, Tony.
It cleans out the catch basins as he's, some of the loose hot top around them as he's going over them, so it's...
It's pretty powerful.
Yeah.
And so we'll be able to get a schedule with street sweeping?
Right, okay.
Am I pushing my luck?
A little bit.
Sure.
Wow. It cleans cities, a happy city.
I wouldn't disagree with you. I will comment on this year's street sweeping. The sheer amount of rain and the sheer amount of sand we put down last winter has been detrimental to us trying to get it cleaned up. Sand is super thick, and when it's wet, it sticks together, and this thing, it doesn't shrugle, it just takes longer. And when it's pouring rain, you can't sweep. And so it's been, we've been at it in every possible minute that we can, and we're getting there. Still have something to do, but we're getting there.
I'm ready. Move to approve a purchase agreement with Northland Industrial Truck Company, NIPCO, for a RAVO I-5 sweeper for the remaining sum of only $215,796 to be paid with future funds, and allow the city manager to sign all necessary documentation.
Second. I was sorry, John.
Motion and a second. Further comments? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Council, uh, number 17, council order number 071908, request of the Public Works Director to purchase a bulk quantity of road culverts.
So, good evening, I'm still here. So in the past, we have purchased culverts kind of as needed. So Bernie and I this spring went out and got three quotes from some local vendors for culvert prices for different sized culverts, with Hammond Lumber coming in as the cheapest option. Then, after some discussions with council members, and Bernie, and Adam, and myself, we decided to look into the option to bulk order culverts. So I went back to the lowest, or the company with the lowest cost, and said, okay, if I bulk order them, can you do any better? And they came and said, yes, if you were to do a bulk order, we could save you an additional approximately $5,100. So I am in front of you now to ask, did you do that bulk order, of which some of it will be charged to local roads, which would be the cross culverts and some driveway culverts in preparation of paving. And then for the rest of it would be driveway culverts and other, mostly driveway culverts that we would need for just the highway department's general citywide maintenance culvert requests and that type thing.
Counselors?
I have the motion. No motion? We have discussion. Why? We have discussion after the motion.
That's true. That's true.
No, whatever. We'll do it your way.
So, I looked at your 34 different quotes, it's kind of a mishmash materials I told you this morning. So are you buying culverts and culverts only, or are you buying some of this four-inch?
No, it's strictly, okay, and I apologize. The, the one for Hammond Lumber for $30,647, the only one that actually has a dollar amount, would be the one I'm looking to actually purchase. So it is 11 12-inch culverts, 33 15-inch culverts, 38 18-inch culverts, 5 24-inch culverts, 9 30-inch culverts, and 5 36-inch culverts.
That could be part of the issue, is because it didn't make it into the electronics that I see.
Yeah, it is.
It did?
Yep. It's the first page after the...
Should be the first page of my memo.
071908 council order.
So are they giving, hey, so that's the one we're gonna use?
Yep, so if you have noted, these, the prices of the culverts, unit prices for these culverts is 20 to $100 cheaper than Hammond's original low quote for the additional savings to doing the bulk order.
All right, so $30,5647 is the amount after discount.
Correct.
Any other questions?
Let's go again. Now she's talking me into it.
All right. Move to approve a purchase agreement for a bulk order of culverts from Hammond Lumber Company for $30,647.76, $14,024.20 to be funded from local roads, 9090900, TAC 59001, and $16,643.56 from the Highway Department General Fund, 1030300, TAC 53038.
Second. You did that so well.
Thank you.
I love those TACs.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
Question, Lisa. Is your plan to simply replace the ones that you use in a given year so that you'll always maintain a supply?
Going forward, my plan would be to, every July, come back for a bulk order for what we would need for that year, so that if we get into budget-free situations, I still have culverts that we can report on in the spring.
Yeah, that's, I'm glad that you did it. This has been a discussion that we've had for as long as I've been sitting on this board. Why don't we do this? And it never has been done, so saving a little money and giving you some inventory. I don't know where you're gonna stick them out there, you have plenty of area, I suppose.
Dustin will find a place.
Dustin will find a place.
Thanks, guys.
Good.
Thank you.
Item 18, council order number 071909, request of the deputy city manager to extend the contract for lawn treatment services at City Hall, Merrill Park, S.K. Whiting Park, Harbor Park, Triangle at De Meyer, Wilson Field, and De Meyer Fields, 1 through 3, with Goodall, Goodall Landscaping.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I was sure he's allowed to do that.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item number 19, council order number 071910, request of the deputy city manager to extend the contract for Nolton Park Mowing and Grounds Maintenance Services for Goodall Landscaping.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. All those, unanimous. Council order number 071911, discussion and authorization on accepting recyclable materials from the Ellsworth American.
Can I, do you want me to talk on this?
I'll let you talk.
Okay, so back in April, the city council had authorized an interim agreement with the Ellsworth American to accept recyclable newspaper. The Ellsworth American had previously recycled their newspaper at Coastal Recycling in Hancock. However, Coastal Recycling did close. We did enter into an interim agreement, just to kind of see how things were gonna work, and to see if it was manageable for our staff, and we have found that it has been a great relationship, so we're asking to enter into a three-year contract at $40 to come.
Any questions? Counselor.
Just a comment. The agreement does allow for either party to renegotiate or get out of it should circumstances change, that all of a sudden the material's not recyclable, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
Any further questions? Counselor, for you.
And it also includes what we're already doing with ADD, that if we get a contaminated load, our staff takes care of it and bills the Americans, so it's, it's, it's a good contract. It protects our taxpayers, and makes a little revenue.
Same motion?
Not yet. Mr. Chairman, move to approve council order 071911, to authorize the acceptance of recyclable newspaper material from the Ellsworth American, and to authorize the city manager to execute a three-year agreement on behalf of the city and an agreement with the Ellsworth American.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 22, uh, 21, council order number 071912, request of the deputy city manager to approve an agreement with DM&amp;J Waste Management Incorporated for the acceptance of demolition debris and wood waste.
Back in 2010, the city had stopped accepting demolition debris and wood waste, because Ellsworth Demo had built their facility right directly behind our transfer station. So they had approached the city and asked if we were willing to stop our operations and move it over to their location, and to enter an agreement with the city. So the contract serves as a way to kind of protect the residents of, you know, keeping the prices at a manageable rate. So this contract would be in effect until 2022. It would change the demo price from $115 a ton to $125 a ton, and the wood waste would remain at the same amount per ton.
And the agreement has worked well?
Yes.
No need to change. Mr. Chairman, move to approve council order 071912, request of the deputy city manager to authorize the city manager to execute on behalf of the city an agreement with DM&amp;J Waste Management Incorporated for the acceptance of demolition debris and wood waste. This agreement will be in effect from July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2022.
Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Item 22, executive session to discuss the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Ellsworth and the Ellsworth City Hall Clerks Unit Massachusetts and Northern New England Laborers District Council, local 3-2 set...